I think by the clock on the wall and the computer here, it's time to call this meeting to order. So with that, I will call the meeting to order and we will have the pledge of allegiance and then a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for its citizens, one nation, united in heaven, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Blanken, if you will, please.
And we pray. Eternal Father, thank you for the gift of your son. Let us always be mindful that Jesus first died and suffered for our sins and rose to life so we may have our life in you. As we pray for our community, we give you thanks for the eternal promises to care for your people. As natural and man-made disasters has fallen across our nation, draw them near to you for comfort. This morning, we give you thanks that you have preserved life and held back calamities upon our county. Reno County is a large county with many facets, financial, and safety obligations. We pray for all directors and staff as they prepare and approve budgets for these difficult times. Grant continual safety to all law enforcement, fire, emergency, healthcare personnel, as they strive to keep your people safe, as they serve, protect others in their line of service, in addition to all the many county workers who carry out their work as they serve the well-being of your people. We ask you for the continual blessings for all citizens, services, industries, who together support and strengthen our county. We ask for your guidance. Protect our industry, commerce, care centers, hospitals, schools, and churches in and around our community. We commend to you, Father, the leaders and the administrators of Reno County, especially Commissioners Don, Ron, Randy, and Richard and Ron. Grant them wisdom as they seek to act fair, decisions, productive regulations for the betterment of your people to whom they serve. Guide these gathered this morning in their work to enable your people, our community, and businesses to prosper, and your name be glorified through them. Give us all eyes to see your life-giving spirit entrusted to us. Bless and guard our hearts, souls, and minds through Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Well, I'd like to welcome everybody here today. First thing, in our public comments and on items not on the agenda, I think maybe we ought to back that up behind our recognition of a retiring employee from our transit division. And Candace from that division is here to say a few words.
Good morning, Commissioners. Candace Bonnison, the Director of Aging and Public Transportation. We're here today to recognize and acknowledge Rochelle Hoskinson's services with Arcat for 14 years. She will be retiring July 31 of next week. And so we wanted to let her know that we appreciate everything that she has done over the years. Her first 10 years, she started out driving. And so she's been the front line, front face. People know her, recognize her. She's been a part of the community for that long, as well as then going into our Transit Operations Assistance, assisting behind the scenes and helping through with dispatch and driver coverage. So we want to extend our thank you and recognize Rochelle for her time with Reno County. And then Assistant Director Natalie.
Hi, yes, I'm Natalie Gertson. I'm the Assistant Director at Public Transportation and Department of Aging. And I just want to say a little word about Rochelle. She's just been amazing. She's, stop up here. Let me give her a big old hug. A lot of work for the community. You have done wonderful. And I just, I wish you the very best on your retirement. And we've kind of been through a lot of thick and thin, it seems like, you know, when we're down drivers. She's always stepped up, covered a lot of shifts, a lot of hours, and she knows a lot of the clients. And I know the clients are going to miss you, and the staff is going to miss you. And today, she got rewarded with about five dozen donuts. So that was amazing to kind of get the week going. And they're really going to miss her. That was the staff that brought in. So we're going to party probably for the next couple of weeks, but it'd be very sad. It does leave, for me, a pretty good-sized hole in the staff because she's been so amazing. So I wish you well, though, on your retirement, Rochelle. And we're going to miss you. We are going to miss you very much. So I mean, I miss everybody too. Thank you so much again. Appreciate you.
And with that, I believe we have a plaque that needs to be presented, or should be, and needs to be. We kind of skipped past any, any public comments. Should anybody in the audience want to make public comments on something not on the agenda now would be the time. I'm not seeing anybody headed for the podium, so we'll assume no one has any. We need to determine the additions or revisions to the agenda. Does anybody have anything that we should include at this point, or move? Seeing none. Our consent agenda is the next item on our, on our agenda. With that, are there any items or any discussion on those items, on that consent agenda, that you feel, if anybody feels they need to make? Seeing none. I would ask for a, a motion to accept.
Motion to accept the consent agenda has proposed.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirst?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Next item on our agenda is, is a recommendation for the architect for the Health Department renovation. Randy, you might want to lead us into that.
Okay. We had put out a request for qualifications, proposals for architect services for the Health Department renovation. And last week, a panel that included Commissioner Parks, Commissioner Winger, Kyle, the Facilities Director, Carla, the Health Department Director, and myself, and Joshua, the intern, we sat in and interviewed all eight firms because they were all qualified. And after the interviews, the committee, the panel, came to a consensus to make a recommendation to choose Landmark Architects, keep it local on this one for this project. And so the request or the recommendation for the commission today is to approve us moving forward with Landmark. We will then have Patrick work with Landmark to come up with an agreement and then bring that back probably on a consent agenda for the actual architect agreement. But that would be the next step. And then Commissioners Winger or Commissioner Parks, do you have any comments on the discussion?
Well, one of the discussions that went on that day, if you don't mind me saying, Randy, is that we're trying to get ahead of the other project finishing at the EMS station so that it'll fall in line with when that one finishes. This one can kick off pretty quickly after that. Most of the people that day were pretty in agreement that they could do that this far out. So I thought that was, that was good. And it'd certainly give Kyle some time to work with them before that happens because it's going to be into next year before that other project even is done at, at Fifth Street EMS. So anyway, that, it ought to work out fairly well.
And I will comment, the funding for the Health Department project will be out of the Health, the Health Capital Outlay Fund. So it's not on a different CIP. It is in their reserve fund. So there's a little over a million dollars in there right now. Doesn't mean there won't be more. We do year-end transfers each year into that fund from the Health Department's fund, but that's what's in there right now. But as Commissioner Parks mentioned, this will be a project we have designs done this year and would go out to, or have construction start sometime next year after EMS has relocated to Fifth Avenue.
And you might touch on what some of the design changes might be in the building beyond just renovating that space, too, if you would.
So the, currently, the EMS areas has a garage and then living quarters, small living quarters. But we're looking at what the Health Department needs, maybe some more exam rooms, conference space, storage, various items. So it's kind of looking long-term what the Health Department needs. Now they'll have extra space and what that, those areas can be used for to have a long-range plan for the Health Department and the space.
And they don't really have an ADA entrance that's approved. And so they're kind of looking at redoing the entrance to help people get in and out as well, so.
Right. The front of the Health Department right now is not ADA compliant. The ramp's too steep. It's, it's not in really good shape. So that is part of this project to get that compliant.
One of the things we talked about, too, is that, that building is, a couple buildings that were put together and it's from 1982. So most people at your house, you update your house more often than this building has been updated. So to get it compliant for handicap is one thing, but also to hopefully make it flow a little easier when people do come in looking for services and be able to get in there without, you know, costing the bank, but, but also make it, you know, look better on the outside, but also be functional inside. So from 1982, we're just trying to update it and then make it go into the future.
I thought the summary that you presented was really good. I just wanted to ask, did any of you talk with each one of these companies, architects, about what their fees would be? Anticipated fees? I know it will be in the contract, but ahead of time, was that brought up with regard to what their fees might, would be? I'm just curious. And if so, why not? Or is that something that needs to be later? But still, there might be some differences.
The concept of the request for qualifications is to find out who's the best professional for the job first. We have, we have an internal budget for what we're willing, what Randy expects to spend on this. And if negotiations don't match up with what they think is appropriate, then we could, we could go back and select a different architect. But, but that's kind of, you're supposed to, it's not a bidding process, so the theory is you want to get the qualifications, pick the best person, pick the best company, and then do the contract.
That was part of the talk, though, with Landmark, was we did, she did visit with us about her fees and then needing a, you know, electrical engineer or contractor engineer, construction engineer and stuff. But her fees were, from the couple of the other ones that we did talk to, she was less than them. So on her fees. So we'll see once they do the contract, like you were saying.
I would say, one, just one comment. With, with any architect design contract, they always are required to come on-site and review the contractor. But sometimes that's an issue with out-of-town architects. And I think we could save some, usually you have to pay for their travel and things. If we had someone in closer to home, that would help us on that.
Well, it wasn't just unanimous off the start. I can tell you that. So there was a lot of discussion before we finally came to the conclusion. And just from my perspective, I'll throw this out. And then it was buried between, you know, Kyle and the rest of us on, on that panel. But there, in my eyes, there was a couple of people kind of specializing in what we're doing more than the others. But they were all more than qualified to do the job, you know. But that's just kind of what we came down to. But it wasn't just a slimmed-down deal.
Anything further from anybody or questions? So at this point, we probably, if there's no further discussion, we'll need a motion to approve Landmark Architects as the firm to provide the design. Is, that's where we're at, right? So with that, I would entertain a motion, unless there's further discussion. And we can discuss after the motion, too. I would move to approve the Landmark Architects as the firm to provide design services for the Health Department.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there?
I'm for using them, local contractors, as, as best we can. It's just going to be better for the community and our, architects, contractors, everybody, if we can.
Well, that's what weighed into my decision as much as anything. I'd like to say local whenever we can as well, Ron.
Just a reminder that we need to make sure that we are the ones in charge of the project.
You know, I'll comment on that real quick. And Kyle could if he liked to. But I will tell you that he asked that question of every contractor, how involved will the ones that are heading that project be with the county, and how much contact that they would make with him so he could stay on top of things. And I appreciate that, Kyle, and, and knowing what the history of some things that went on. So he was on top of that. So giving you kudos, that.
Well, I mean.
And that's what we need. We, we need people doing their jobs. Hey, Randy, not to jump off that subject, can you blow that up just a little bit on the screen? Might help people.
And Commissioners, just to remind you, the motion, even with the approval, we'll still come back with an agreement. So.
Contingent upon a contract.
Yes.
With that, if there's no further discussion, we'll need a vote, if you would please help us.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirst?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes. Motion passed. So we're getting to the end of our business items there. It's kind of a short meeting this week. We're down to county commission report comments.
You have anything for us, Randy, that, or Patrick, or any of you guys that?
On the, in the agenda, there's the monthly department reports for the District Attorney, Communications, Health, Human Resources, IT, Public Works, Solid Waste, and Youth Services. Any questions that you might have on any of those reports? Also, in the agenda packet is the financial report. I'll pull that up. This is through June of this year, so 50% of the year is completed. But as a reminder, not all departments spend evenly throughout the year. So, but all the departments and the funds are in pretty good shape at this time. Didn't know if you had any questions on anything in the, in the financial report?
I personally didn't see anything that stuck out that I thought needed a lot of discussion. I don't know about the other guys. So I would say with that, there's, there's no, no motion or anything. It's, it's reports. And, and thank you for the reports.
And that's all I have.
Okay. County Commission comments or reports. Richard, you're under the gun this week. We'll start at your end.
Well, it was, doing this architect interviews was pretty eye-opening for me because I've never interviewed an architect. But the way they had it set up and the questions that were being asked from Kyle and everybody on the panel were very good questions. I had a list, and then we each had a book.
Your microphone, please.
Sorry. Doing the architect interviews was, like I said, kind of an eye-opener. We had a book that was put together. So it showed each architect and give some of their, some of their work that they've done. But being local, like we were talking, kind of makes this job nice because it's not a multimillion-dollar job. And there were some companies that were from Kansas City or Topeka. And a lot of their jobs, their average is over $2 million. And we were wondering if, you know, if we had some concerns, or Kyle had some concerns, you know, how soon would they be able to get here to answer the concerns? The other thing is, we'd love to do local as much as we can. And then we talked about, you know, doing it on a time schedule that would fit what the Health Department needs, and by not closing off the whole Health Department to do certain things, but also using local suppliers as much as we can also. So, and I think Landmark will do as much of that as they can. So that was one of the things that, in that interview process, that was, was pretty good. And like Randy was saying, we had eight of them. We had to pick our top three, and then we discussed those, and then we got down to one. And then it was unanimous pick for her, for this landmark. So, that being said, the other thing is, I know with the heat and everything, and schools getting ready to start, people need to be on the, just driving responsibly. I mean, I've seen way too many accidents up around the college and, and other places in town where it's just not, people obeying traffic laws or just not paying any attention. So please, please, if you're out there and you're driving, especially with the school getting ready to start, we'll have some little kids, you know, walking across the streets and things like that. So please be on the lookout for that. The other one is, I know we just got done with harvest and the farmers are still doing stuff in the fields. We actually use a farmer to mow our yard and do yard work. So it's an extra job that they take on, so they have some extra income. And I would just like to tell the, the agriculture areas in the, in the county, we appreciate everything you do. Without, you know, your goods going to market, then, you know, food doesn't get on the table. So we, my family does appreciate you very much, and I know the county does too. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Ron? Well, 4-H Fair starts tomorrow. I mean, it's already started, but the big events start tomorrow. So come out and see what the youth in the county are doing. Also, tomorrow at about 10 o'clock will be the groundbreaking for the new Arlington EMS station, which has been forever and a day to get going, but it finally is getting started. And we've got some directors here today, and some of the, of your, of our employees work inside. But there's a lot of them that work outside. And I just want you to know that there's us up here who have worked in that heat, too. And we have been in the last few days. And so I just want to thank all of our partners and please, department heads, carry this on to the people that are doing a fantastic job and are making the county work and showing prosperous. And without them putting up with this heat and being careful out in the heat, it wouldn't get done. So that's a tough job right now. So please carry it on to your people, staff that works under you.
Passing the buck to me, huh?
Yeah.
Well, I've got kind of a different report this week. I thought about saying this, not saying this, because I don't want to reveal anybody, and I won't. But we had some neighbors that moved in from Tampa, Florida. And very excited about having them. And first, I'll qualify, it was the last of the ARPA housing that they bought and renovated. And they bought that house, which is a very nice little house now. They moved up here, from both of them were in service. One got, was in the Navy, and the other one is still in the Army. They moved into Hutchinson, Kansas, and she will be the very first Army recruiter, female in Hutchinson, Kansas. She's still finishing her training. Will be up here shortly. They've got a young daughter. And Saturday, we did something with him. He is, he's from Italy originally, actually served in the military there and here in the United States, is dearly, dearly in love with the United States. Both of them are, and what we stand for. But they, they like farmers markets and those kinds of things. So we sat out on an adventure Saturday with him and his little girl, and went to some various places to show them around a little bit of Reno County and Hutchinson. And it is amazing when you haven't done that for a long time, looking through someone else's eyes to see what they see and how they feel about that. I had to share this story with a couple of people throughout this week, but the excitement about the things that we offer in Hutchinson and Reno County, you know, we worked an awful long time trying You know, we worked an awful long time trying to develop the, the people to come to Reno County, and then when you get somebody here, sometimes there's not much follow-up. And for my wife and I, we had an absolute ball. The little girl's just a doll. My wife has fell in love with her. But what I heard from him and the excitement and the things we have to offer here, nearly didn't get all of it touched on because he had a contractor he had to meet back at the house for some things they're doing, excited me again about living in, in Reno County and Hutchinson. And the comment that came out of his mouth was, there's nothing like this in Tampa, Florida. One, it's nice to slow down, but there's nothing, they don't offer the things that we offer in a community like this. And with doing the Make My Move and some of the other things that Chamber and we've done together, I thought it fit very nicely and that, that we would see somebody move in and have these kind of comments. You know, we take for granted the different things we have, of course, but I went down and, and stuck my neck out a little bit. I, I'm going to talk to the neighbor, but I asked, because one of the comments that he made to me when we was driving around was, in fact, we ended up at Hedrick's Exotic Animal Farm, and they just had a ball. They're going to go back out there sometime. He's excited enough, he wants some family to move here too. And so that's what it's all about in my book, that we have people that want to have community and move here. But he said, you know, you should do a promo video about this place and get it out there. And I know we got two people in the works at Make My Move, one from California, they told me, and one from Washington, Seattle area somewhere, that they've added that are on their way to Hutchinson, Kansas here shortly. And, you know, their houses get sold and they get their affairs in order, they're going to be moving down here. So we, we're seeing some influx from that, but that made me think that maybe they should be a promo family if they're open to that for Reno County. There's just so many factors involved in what went on in that, and everywhere we went on Saturday, you might not believe this, but things are not necessarily coincidental. We ran into key people that we knew, that he was excited about, that we was able to get them connected with, and I thought that was neat. What I meant was Seth at the Chamber, and I won't reveal what the Chamber's doing, but they had met and he said, we were talking about promo and a family or two to use for that. And he was extremely excited about maybe using them as a promo. There's so many connections and things, so. I hope that that happens, but you know, when we, for people in the public, when we're spending these dollars, I know we all get chided for that because it's money that's your tax dollars. When you see it actually, a motion like that and you see the results of it and you see how excited people are to be in this community, and it could grow from there by one or two families, that's, that's what we're excited about. I know we need housing, we've talked about that, but there's still some housing available and that needs to be filled. And so I just wanted to share that with the board, with the community that could hear this. I think it could be an exciting thing to happen if they're open to that when she gets here. But I was wishing to share, I was in here to hear that she's going to be an Army recruiter for the, for the reserves. And so I'll probably share that with him if he didn't hear this, so that he can too. But that, I'm just going to leave it at that, so I, I thought you guys might be kind of excited about hearing some of that kind of news. I thought it was pretty neat, so anyway.
Anything positive is always great.
Yeah, so often there's not something positive.
So often you don't get to hear the positive.
That's true.
Ron?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. That leaves me. First of all, I said last week, I won't be able to make that groundbreaking, and I regret that because I, I've been involved and, and Dave's worked very hard on this and, and we definitely need to keep our infrastructure up to do the job in that part of the county and, and make sure that we're planning for the future and, and keeping our infrastructure up and, and so that we are here for the future and can do a good job. Got a call on a little fire deal. I've talked to the administration and there's, they've been visiting with, with department heads and other things that may address the issue and how to best address the issue. I think here in the next few weeks, we may be able to come up with something that, that is palatable by all and will help solve some of these issues. When, when things are looked at a little closer and studied a little closer, I'm sure we'll have something in front of us or at least a discussion coming. It's been pretty frequent that there's been comments and things said and calls made on But that's the main things that I wanted to touch on today. I, I know we got a quad county coming up. And we'll have to make some plans on who and how we're going to get there. A few other things like that, but basically that's the major things that have come across to me here recently. So like Ron says, support our youth. It's amazing, all the different things that they're involved in. Just about anything yet they'd want to be involved in, there's, there's a program with it. So it's interesting to see what young minds are coming up with. And with that, I'll, I'll sign off if there, that's the end of comments. If anybody else hasn't, you know, sometimes we forget when we're talking and like say a little something. But if there's nothing further, I'd say it's time for an adjournment. So I'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.